Okay. All right, I'll call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order for today, December 3rd, 2024. Daisy, can you confirm the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes, I can confirm the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
Okay, thank you, Daisy. Roll call, please.
I will call, roll. Commissioner Seidout. Commissioner Vanover.
Here.
Commissioner Alt.
Here.
Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Padgett.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sell.
Here.
Chair Waters.
Here.
So, we currently have eight appointed members, seven of whom are in attendance today, and that constitutes a quorum. So, having provided proper notice of today's meeting and having a quorum, we can proceed with business.
All right. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the October 15th meeting? If so, please state those. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you. Motion to approve and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. New business will move into quasi judicial matters. Application CU 24-8.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a conditional use permit application that's filed by Deborah Schmidt on behalf of Petals Flowers, and that property is part of a C2 neighborhood shopping district, and the request is to add the retail sale of alcoholic beverages to the current floral sales. And under the C2 district, that requires a conditional use permit, and Mr. Gage Roberts will be presenting that report on staff's behalf.
Thank you, Dean. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. So, we'll start with a little bit of project location and background. This property is located on the north side of Center Street between South Fourth Street and Kenwood Park Drive. The applicant states that Petals Flowers has been in business at this location for over 77 years. The building as it exists today has been, dates back to 1983. The eastern portion of this property is zoned C2 neighborhood shopping, and the western portion, which is where the parking lot is located, is zoned R3 multifamily residential because it was occupied by a single-family dwelling that was demolished by Charles Petal, but the lot was never rezoned. The C2 zoning district requires all off-street parking to be paved, but the gravel parking lot at Petals predates the paving requirement and is a pre-existing non-conforming parking lot. So, on the screen, you can see an image of the current existing Petals, and then off to the west of the building, you'll see the entry into the gravel parking lot. So, the nature of the current request, Petals Flowers is proposing to add alcoholic beverages to their sales inventory to complement existing floral sales. The applicant has provided the following examples of services and products they're hoping to provide. These include wedding packages, including floral bouquets, and including liquor for receptions and parties, gift packages, baskets, including wine and other alcoholic beverages, wine and floral design events, including the sale of wine products, convenience for customers in purchasing flowers at the same time as a wine or liquor product, and a showcase of Kansas wines and other liquor products. In order to obtain a retailer's liquor license, Petals Flowers must have an approved conditional use permit through the Planning Commission. And we would note that this application is for approval of a retail packaged liquor license. The consumption of alcohol on the premises for the purposes of events or otherwise is not permitted with the approval of this license. An on-premise liquor license would be needed to have any consumption of alcohol actually on the premise of the building. So, your role in this case is to hold a public hearing for review, and then the Planning Commission may oppose appropriate conditions and safeguards or other requirements which the Commission deems appropriate upon finding that all necessary... So, pursuant to Section 42, the Planning Commission shall not grant a conditional use permit unless it shall make findings of fact directly based upon the particular evidence presented to it that support all of the following conclusions. So, there are seven different conclusions that we are going to go through, through our staff's findings. So, we can start with the next slide. So, the first one is, the proposed conditional use complies with all applicable regulations in the C2 district, including lot size requirements, bulk regulations, use limitations, and performance The existing lot and building are in compliance with the lot size requirements, bulk regulations, landscaping regulations, use limitations, and performance standards required in the C2 zoning district. And while, as we discussed before, the C2 zoning district does require all off-street parking be paved, Petals has a pre-existing non-conforming parking lot. The next, the proposed conditional use at the proposed location will contribute to and promote the welfare or convenience of the public, so the proposed use could provide a potential source of additional revenue for a small local business. The proposed use could afford customers the convenience of being able to purchase alcohol in addition to flowers at the same location, similar to large retail floral operations found at retailers like Dylan's or Walmart, and the proposed use could allow for Petals to provide alcohol as part of their wedding packages and other gifts. Next, the proposed conditional use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood, because this proposed use would be conducted inside of an existing building, on an existing building lot, and would not prevent or impact development and/or use of neighboring property, and no expansions or changes are being proposed. The location and size of the conditional use, the nature and intensity of the operation, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the conditional use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood or prevent development and use of neighboring properties. This proposed use would be conducted, again, inside an existing building, on an existing building lot, and would not prevent or impact development and/or use of neighboring property, and no expansions are being proposed. Off-street parking and loading areas will be provided. The addition of alcohol sales should not impact parking. Currently, Petals provides off-street parking in the gravel parking lot west of the building. In the accessory nature, the proposed alcohol sales should not increase the demand for parking beyond what is available in the existing lot. And finally, adequate utility drainage and other such necessary facilities. Because this is a proposed use within an existing storefront, approval of the request would not create any additional burden on public utilities or generate any demand for public services. Oh, I missed one. So, finally, adequate access roads or entrance and exit drives will be provided and shall be designed to prevent traffic hazards. Property at 341 Center Street is an existing commercial property with direct driveway access to Center Street, and because there are no existing, because there are no proposed changes, approval of this proposed conditional use would not create any additional traffic hazards or congestion. The board would have the following options when considering this application. You could approve the application upon finding that the requirements of Section 42-597-2C2 of the Slant could have been satisfied. You could approve the conditional use permit subject to certain specified conditions and/or revisions. You could postpone consideration of the application if additional information is needed, or you could deny the application if the required findings cannot be made, or if the Commission believes the proposed retail liquor sales would cause injury to this drowning properties. And staff would recommend approval of a conditional use permit for this proposed use be made subject to the following condition, and any additional conditions the Commission may deem appropriate. That condition will be upon any change in ownership. The new business owners are subject to all conditions listed under the CUP and shall notify the city of the ownership change. And with that, staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Thank you, Gage. That was very well presented. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? All right. Would the applicant care to come to the podium? You certainly don't need to, but if you'd like to, you're welcome to.
This is my consultant. So, if there's any questions, he can surely answer them for you.
Okay, if one of you could just state your name and your address, please, for Daisy.
My name is Carlos Ramos. I'm a consultant for Ms. Schmidt. My address is 4619 North Arkansas, Wichita, Kansas.
Okay, thank you. Does the Commission have any questions for the applicant?
Carlos, is this something that would be delivered also? If you were delivering flowers, would you also possibly deliver the alcohol to a site? Is that...
Right now, with the current laws, she would have to apply for additional licensing for kind of delivery. Right now, it would be illegal to deliver alcohol. So, these packages, in theory, would promote coming in, buy packages, people to take home, especially for like a Valentine's Day or a Mother's Day type of holiday, where there would be a lot of traffic and would create a little bit of more add-on sales for her.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Is this a thing? I looked online to see, I've never associated florist with alcohol packages, you know, bottle of champagne or so forth. And I know there are, what I found online was there are a few in Kansas City, a few in Wichita here in Kansas, but nothing around this area that I could pull up. Is this a thing in our area?
No, sir. This would be novel to the city of Salina, and what we have seen over the period of the last, especially 20 years, standalone flower shops has become more and more difficult for its continuous existence. It used to be something that was part of a ceremony. Flowers would be at every event. And what we have found with big chains coming in, such as Walmart, as pointed out, or Dylan's, we have seen, you know, especially with new generations come in, not coming in just specifically for flowers. And with Hobby Lobby, which for us in the flower industry, gift lines was huge for us. It definitely supplemented our income. That's kind of gone away. So, we decided to kind of, what would be kind of romantic outing? Okay, let's, a nice bottle of champagne, a fine wine, flowers, and kind of be able to bring those two together. So, it is novel to this area, but it's something that we have seen, especially on the east and west coast, as possible, you know, a new type of model.
And I read you're going to showcase some Kansas wines and...
Yes, sir. We're looking at like local, you know, distilleries, local wine producers, and bring them on and, you know, kind of, you know, create something that would be a local type of feel to Salina or even Kansas. Make it, you know, make it very comfortable as a shopping experience.
So, I had a question, like for scenarios. So, in both cases, is this true, where my husband could stop by, get a dozen roses, a bottle of wine, and come home? Or my daughter could come in and say, "I'm planning a wedding. I need you to do all the flowers, plus I want three cases of whatever." Is that, both scenarios would?
Yes, both, I mean, assuming your daughter, obviously, is over 21 years old. But yes, as long as, you know, there is, one of the things I'd like to point out would be alcohol is one of the most regulated businesses, can you do, that there is in the United States, you know, and even at the state level here in Kansas. So, as long as, from, you know, Ms. Schmidt's, you know, as long as from her standpoint and the standpoint of who she's selling to, I mean, adhere to all the laws and regulations of Kansas, it should not be a problem. But it makes a really cool experience, you know, to be able to offer packages for people instead of kind of running all over the place. And again, we're really pivoting off this idea of alcohol, you know, they come in here and buy a nice bottle of wine, "Oh, hey, have you thought about flowers?" And really be able to reintroduce to consumers the love for flowers, which is the type of business that we're in and what we're trying really to promote, not so much alcohol as much as the flower side of things.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
I would assume as a retail establishment with this, it is possible for somebody just to come in and purchase alcohol without flowers? Was that the way you were leaning?
Yes, sir. I mean, that would be a definite, but we want to educate them about flowers.
Of course.
Yeah, but I mean, yes, somebody can, you know, come in, buy a case of beer, and that would be good, but we really want to kind of hedge ourselves to wines, champagnes, things that would measure a little bit of flowers. So, we're not going to be that 99 cent shooter, can you do? That won't be our thing. So, we want to kind of be on the nicer side of things, can you do? Which there's nothing wrong with shooters for anybody, but that will be our model.
I wasn't judging.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you for the consideration.
Would anyone from the audience like to ask questions or have a comment? All right. Dustin.
Do you have one representative online, Mr. Austin Hanson? If he has anything he'd like to share on this topic?
He is, sir.
He's a youth one, isn't he? He's a youth guy, right?
Oh, yeah, right.
No, I don't have anything specific to add, but overall, I think it is a great idea. As you said, you guys are struggling a little, I think, I might have misheard, but struggling a little bit with like the competitors within the area, and I think it's a great addition to try and drive your business.
Okay, thank you. All right, I open it up to the Commission for discussion or a motion.
Are there any other florists in this area that have, that are, have this ability to retail liquor at this point?
No one that has requested it. And just, just so for the Commission's benefit, if you are either going to do a retail liquor establishment, or you are going to do some sort of drinking establishment, the state of Kansas has a local zoning requirement. So, anyone who wants to get licensed to either sell at retail or have a drinking establishment, those applications are generally brought to me, and I review them to make sure that the zoning allows what's being proposed. And so, in some, in this particular case, if they had brought this in to me without coming before the Planning Commission, I would have said, "No, I can't sign this. That requires Planning Commission approval." So, if you act favorably on this today, then when they present their application for retail license, I can sign off saying that the zoning's been approved, and there's not anybody else in town that's brought something like this forward. So, this kind of, this was new to us too as well. We kind of, it's like, no, this is new. And so, but this, that is the process for anyone, and in some cases, it's a zoning district that's allowed by right, so I just sign. But in this case, this requires Planning Commission approval, and so your action today would essentially allow me to sign a license for Petals.
So, this is not a blanket for every floral establishment?
No, this is a case by case for this location.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's a, it's a novel idea, and I wish I would have thought of it. And seeing that we've met the findings for the conditional use permit, I would make a motion that we approve application CU 24-8 with the one staff recommendation caveat there.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the conditional use permit with the staff recommendation on page six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. All right, we'll move into public hearing applications, Z19-6, P19-2, and P19-2A.
So, for the Commission's benefit, we have a whole series of application requests that relate to a property that's located at the west end of Bachtah Court, and Bachtah Court is a street that extends west of North Ninth Street and is south of I-70. And a number of these applications came before the Planning Commission in 2019, but we were in a situation where Mr. Bachtah was unable to get sufficient control of access to his property to extend Bachtah Court to provide access. And so, now that has been addressed, and we can move forward with these requests. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Hers under item 3.2A, I just want to confirm for the Planning Commission that this property is in the map floodway from Mulberry Creek, but if you have the land use map, don't we have that in the, in the graphics? So, in 2019, the one item that did get completed and acted on was the Planning Commission recommended and the City Commission approved a land use change that changed this from a conservation area, meaning unlikely to develop, to commercial. So, now, all this area from Ninth Street to the back end of this is shown as commercial. So, the comprehensive plan has been amended to show this as commercial, and there's no, there's no need for any further action on that. The next application is item 3.2B, and that is a request to rezone that same property there at the west end of Bachtah Court from agricultural to C7 highway commercial. And so, again, our, our location of the property is at the west end of Bachtah Court, which is west of North Ninth Street, south of I-70. It's now owned under the title of Bachtah Construction, Inc., which is Roger Bachtah is the president. The property has been in the city limits since 1971, but it has always been unplatted, and it's been zoned agricultural. And there used to be a farmhouse on the property, and that was one of the purposes for the KDOT. Frontage Road is at the farmhouse, if you could, well, you can see it on this map, but the farmhouse used to be accessed from Diamond Drive, and when the interstate went through, the access was cut off. So, KDOT built a frontage road that ran from North Ninth Street to the farmhouse, and so that was the origin of that roadway. And so, you can see on this map that the property directly to the east is Zone C7, so this request is consistent with the, the property zoning to the east. And so, that C7 district allows things like truck plazas, restaurants, motels as permitted uses, and your role this afternoon is to determine whether this 6.31 acre tract is more suitable for commercial development or continued agricultural use. And so, as we did in, in 2019, because this is in a floodway, and there has been some history of floods on Mulberry Creek, we have provided findings that could be made in support of commercial development and findings that can be made for not allowing any further commercial development. But some findings that support allowing commercial development here is that it is close to I-70, it's visible from I-70, it's been annexed in the city, and it's been in the city since 1971. It is in the city's neighborhood revitalization area, and what that means is that if somebody invests in the neighborhood revitalization area and constructs a new building, they're potentially eligible for property tax rebates as, as an incentive to invest, and leaving this zoned agricultural inhibits this development from being able to have any interstate-oriented uses. The applicant has hired an engineering firm, Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions, which I believe has since been bought out by Benish, but I guess Ms. Waters keeps track of those things better than I can, so maybe she can update you. But seems like these firms are bought out all the time, so I don't think Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions still exist, but they did do a study, and they determined that it is in fact feasible to develop a portion of this site and still conform with FEMA floodway regulations. It's adjacent to other C7 zoning, so what's proposed here is compatible with what's to the east of it on the south side of Bachtah Court. There are utilities and streets in place that can be extended to the development site, and the C7 zoning being requested is consistent with the land use map amendment from 2019. So, approving C7 zoning would be consistent with the comprehensive plan as amended. And then, we have provided five findings that could be made to support not approving this request, and the first of those is that when the comprehensive plan was first done, this was a conservation area based on it being in the floodway, and it's, it's further development of the floodway should be discouraged. The property to the east was a one-for-one replacement construction. In other words, there was a large building, motel building there, the old Ramada Inn, and it was removed and replaced with similar-sized buildings. And only uses having low damage potential should be allowed in the floodway, and so any new structures here could be susceptible to flood damage, although the work done by the engineers has been designed to prevent that. There's only one way into the site, and if we had flooding or closure of Bachtah Court, there's no other way to get in and reach the site. And then, the comprehensive plan is noted, did originally show this as, as a conservation area. So, as it relates to Mr. Bachtah's zoning request, you could recommend approval of the C7 zoning subject to satisfactory plating of the property and, and make the appropriate findings that we have provided for you in the report. You could recommend that this item be further postponed to allow staff or the applicant to address questions that may arise or provide additional information that's not been addressed, or you could recommend denial of this application, provided that appropriate findings are made in support of denial. I can report that the, there was a recommendation from 2019 that recommended approval of this request, and that went to the City Commission, but the, all the approvals that occurred in 2019 have expired and are no longer valid. So, under this item, your first decision point is whether you think this property is appropriate for commercial zoning, commercial development. So, with that, I'll address any questions you have about either the land use map change or the request for commercial zoning and development.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Are there any questions of staff?
Just quickly, maybe it's a typo, on the first or the second page of the actual application, it refers to 6.81 acres. It's really 6.31, is that correct?
Yes, which, what page are you pointing to?
Well, this is the first page of the application. The next page, under background information, has 6.81. And then, it says the approximate street address is 635 Coach Light Lane. I was out there, and it, the street sign says Bachtah.
Right. When the application was filed, we're using the 2019 application, and when the application was filed, the address was 635 Coach Light Lane.
You see what I'm talking about? So, 6.31 is the correct amount.
Based on the survey of the... Based on the survey of the property that's been done, the site has 6.31 acres.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of staff?
Can't find anywhere where it says 6.81.
Okay. Hearing none. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Unless you guys have questions.
I do not. All right. I open it up to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Well, it seems to me that it's a natural place for commercial development. I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer in my book. And I think a long time ago, Dean, when Ken Kennedy was on, didn't we address this a long time ago with some portion of that property over there?
Well, there was an application, essentially the same set of applications minus the final plat, came forward in 2019. And so the Planning Commission at that time recommended the change to the comprehensive plan, a change to commercial zoning and a preliminary plat. And then based on those recommendations, Mr. Bakhtah, who was a contract purchaser at the time, completed the purchase of the property and then, and worked with the engineer to do the necessary changes. I don't know if you have an aerial photo readily available, Dustin? But one thing that makes this a little different is that based on what occurred in 2019, you may have to, you may have to zoom in, but most of the work that was contemplated by the civil engineers working on this has already been done. So there's a compensatory storage basin here. These sites have been built up. You can almost see the outline for the cul-de-sac farther north that's been graded and staked out. And so there's been a lot of investment made by Mr. Bakhtah based on the belief that this could be developed commercially. And so there were a lot of steps taken based on that previous action.
Thank you.
So we need a motion then on 3.2B. The first item is a public hearing, so that's what we're conducting now.
Yes.
And then we need to approve the, make a motion or so to do the, for the application. Is that right?
If the commission feels that C-7 zoning is appropriate and this is in fact, should be commercial development property, you should make a motion recommending approval of C-7 zoning for the site. And if that is favorable, then we'll move forward and discuss the plating with you.
Okay. I want to confirm, no one from the audience cares to speak? All right. Dustin?
The only individual online is student Commissioner Austin.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the application Z-196 to change it from A1 agricultural to C-7 highway commercial.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve the change from agricultural to C-7 highway commercial and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right. We'll move into the next application, Dean.
I think that what we're doing here is because there is a requirement that when you have a preliminary plat approved by the Planning Commission, that you must move forward with a final plat within 12 months of that approval. And it's been five years instead of 12 months, so all that has expired. So what we're doing here is we're just running this all concurrently, so there's no risk of anything expiring, so we'll go right from another. So the preliminary plat is just a review of the feasibility of the property. And one of the things I wanted to show here is the difficulty that both the city and Mr. Bakhtah were having from the standpoint that this is what KDOT acquired to build that frontage road. And so basically, they have ownership and control of this area where Mr. Bakhtah wants to extend his street. And so what has occurred is that this shaded area here is controlled by Mr. Bakhtah, and he's proposing to dedicate that to the city. What has changed is that KDOT has now deeded this over to the city of Salina, and we control it in terms of building a public street. So if you could go to the preliminary plat drawing, please, Dustin. It says Coach Light Edition on it. Well, it's the actual plat. Well, in your packets, there is information about the preliminary plat, and it's labeled as Coach Light Edition because when this was first proposed, that was Coach Light Lane, and this was going to be the Coach Light Edition. But if you look at that plat, you'll see contour lines all over the place. So it looks like this. And so this is the plan for development. And what the engineer for wood engineering came up with is that if, in the event of a flood event on Mulberry Creek, any overflow from the creek is going to go into this storage area, will go over a low berm here and be stored in here. And then this berm here is going to protect the development sites here from flooding. These have been elevated to create building pads for a building here, potentially a restaurant-type building, and then a second building here. This would be the access. And the plan is to extend water like this and loop it back here so that we have a looped system with two sources of flow. And sewer would also be extended. You can see here footprints for additional buildings. So there's a Comfort Inn that's right here. And then there's a proposal to build a Best Western Motel right here. Those plans have been under review for some time, and they've not started construction yet. And then there was approval to do a third building here. And then this is where Mr. Bakhtah's property starts. And so we have Building Site One, Building Site Two. And so our recommendation in 2019 and our recommendation at this time would be to approve the preliminary plat for development in that it has been demonstrated to be feasible to develop this property. And one of the conditions we had in 2019 was that Mr. Bakhtah or his representatives get the right to build Bakhtah Court from KDOT in some fashion. And so it was the inability to fulfill that condition and to allow the frontage road to be continued that stopped this in its tracks. And so that has now been fulfilled, and this allows the applicant to move forward. Of all the capacity in that drainage structure to the south, only 8% of that would be taken up by runoff from the development. So it is more than large enough to do that. The third recommended condition was that we have a maintenance agreement or covenants that deal with two things. So the two things that were part of the original preliminary plat was that this dead-end road is longer than 600 feet. And if you'll notice, this second lot, this back lot, has no frontage on Bakhtah Court. And so their proposal is to dedicate an access easement and a shared access road right here. And so this would not be landlocked, but would have access through an easement. And so in 2019, those two variations as to street length and lot frontage were approved. And so our recommendation is consistent with 2019, is that this preliminary plat be approved, including the two requested variations relating to the length of Bakhtah Court and the lot frontage for the back lot. And then the other conditions that we have relating to Mr. Bakhtah being responsible for the public improvements. So this is consistent with 2019. Our recommendation is the same. The only other thing we wanted to point out that it is, it's not, and Mr. Bakhtah probably be happy to tell you, but it is not, is not a routine matter to develop a property in the floodway. And so one of the reasons we attached all that information for you is just to show that he has fulfilled every regulatory requirement that there is for building in a floodway. He has a local permit. He has a state permit from Kansas Division of Water Resources, and he has a conditional Loma from FEMA for his two building pads. So he has gone through the regulatory steps. And so the reason we included that in the packet is just to demonstrate that he's been serious about this and has done the necessary things to make this developable. So our recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat, including the two variations. And I'd be open to any questions you have about this development plan.
Thank you, Dean. Any questions of staff? Anyone from the audience have any questions? Okay. I'll open it up to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Well, I would move that we approve the preliminary plat, P-192, filed by Bakhtah Construction.
With the?
With the conditions that the staff has recommended.
On page number six.
Right.
I'd second that.
Okay. It's been moved in second to approve the preliminary plat, application P-19-2, with the staff recommendations on page six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
That brings us to the final plat. And so what has occurred, as we noted, was that this, this request went forward to the City Commission. They approved a zoning change on first reading, with second reading held until a final plat came back. And that final plat has to come back within 12 months. And that did not occur. And so all, as we noted, all the prior approvals have expired and we're more or less starting over. And in September, city received a quick claim deed from KDOT, transferring ownership from KDOT to the city of Salina. That's been recorded in the deeds office, and so that allows Bakhtah Court to be extended. This is a request for a final plat that would actually create the lots. And the plan is to build, extend, construct Bakhtah Court to city street standards. And as we noted, the original street name was Coach Light Lane, and that was changed to Bakhtah Court in 2019 at the request of the abutting property owners. The owners of the motel site is Ha Su Bakhtah, and this is Roger Bakhtah. So there was unanimous agreement that this be Bakhtah Court. So the lot design has a front lot of 1.6 acres and a rear lot of 1.1 acres. And as we pointed out, that south lot, Lot 3, is simply common area for storage detention and compensatory flood storage. And so utilities can be extended, drainage has been addressed, the drainage improvements are already made. The changes that we have noted that aren't exactly reflected on this drawing, but the north boundary of this plat is actually going to be this line up here. And the city owns this, so the city is going to be a co-owner in this. And that, that will be designated as public way, so that'll allow the street to be constructed there, but the city would retain fee title to that property. This property predates the sidewalk requirement in the subdivision regulations, and there's no sidewalk system that presently exists on Bakhtah Court. And when the Comfort Inn was built, there was no sidewalks required at that time. So the applicant's requesting a variation from the sidewalk requirement as part of the street length variation. We can't speak to whether the applicant, how he intends to finance the street's water and sewer. It's potentially eligible for special assessment financing, but that will, that will be a choice for the developer. As we noted, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So if we have addressed, or the applicant has addressed to your satisfaction that all policy and technical issues have been satisfied, our recommendation would be to approve this final plat with the conditions that we've outlined on page six and page seven, which are pretty standard for any commercial subdivision. And the reason we don't have any special conditions about the floodplain is because Mr. Bakhtah's and his engineers have already addressed all those.
Thank you, Dean. Are there any questions for Dean? All right. Any comments from the public, either in person or online? Okay. I'll open it up to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move approval of application P-192A, which is the final plat, subject to the six conditions listed on page six and seven of this report.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve application P-19-2A with the conditions listed on page six and seven of the report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move into application M-24-14.
While we're on the subject of KDOT, KDOT has a requirement every 10 years that they ask cities to look at their, what they call their urban area boundary, which is an area surrounding the city, which are impacted by city traffic, and also asks that the city look at its functional street classification system and provide that information, updated information to KDOT. So Mr. Michelson is going to talk to you about some updates to the city's functional street classification map.
Thank you, Dean. So the city of Salina's comprehensive plan adopted by the Planning Commission and City Commission in 2010 delineates the future growth areas for new development based on proximity to existing municipal facilities and services and the city's ability to economically extend such facilities and services to support development. And Chapter 2.2 of the comprehensive plan deals with connectivity and the transportation network within the urban, within the urban area. And historically, a functional street classification map has been adopted as part of the transportation planning portion of the comprehensive plan. In the 2010 comprehensive plan, that contains a major In the 2010 comprehensive plan, that contains a major street plan map, but that map does not actually classify the entire street system. So, a functional street classification map is a map that classifies each street in the city according to its function, and there are three street classifications, the major arterials, minor arterials, and collector streets where through traffic predominates, and a fourth class of local streets where local traffic is predominant. And in December 2014, the city commission reviewed and, oop, back, back, sorry, city commissioner reviewed and approved both an updated urban area boundary and a functional street classification map. The functional street classification map has been in effect more, more or less in the same form since that time. Another related boundary to, that correlates with this map is an urban area boundary, or UAB, and that exists for cities with populations greater than 5,000, and these boundaries are based on US Census areas and have been, they get set by the city and approved by the Federal Highway Administration. So, the functional street classification map is based on the UAB boundary, and therefore it's necessary to update the functional street classifications when the UAB, when the urban area boundary gets updated. So, in September of this year, the city commission reviewed and approved an updated urban area boundary for the city, which extended the boundary to the southwest and the southeast of where it was previously. So, staff has prepared an updated functional street classification map to be consistent with the updated urban area boundary. So, approval of this case of M-24-14 would adopt this updated functional street classification map. And there's a few graphics here to go through. The first one is just, this is the 2010 comprehensive plan, major street plan map, and as you can see, it doesn't, it, it shows all the streets in the city, it shows the urban service area, which is similar to the urban area boundary, but slightly different, and I believe this may show the urban area boundary as well, but does not contain functional street classifications. So, this next slide shows the previous urban area boundary, which is grayed out over most of the city, and then the areas highlighted in yellow are the areas that were, where it was extended this year. So, you can see that there, there are areas now that we would need to classify or set street classifications for those, those portions. And this is the 2015 functional street classification map, and the urban area boundary is kind of grayed out over, over the city there. So, so then you go, jump over to the current one that's being proposed with this application, and what we, what staff has done is just looked at all the streets within that area and set the classifications for them, mostly just being consistent with what they, what they are, where they're adjacent to, where the streets that are adjacent to it within the existing boundary, and carrying that through, or setting a functional classification that is consistent with future development, how we intend for development to happen in those areas. There's a total of 14 second, street segments, and this is one of the graphics that's in your packet as well, that has a list of the segments and a map that has the corresponding numbers roughly in the same location as that street segment, just to help indicate which ones were, which street segments were classified. And so, a few staff comments. The functional classification map is a representation of the present and future functions of the Salina street system comprised of existing streets and future street projects. It provides a guide for future improvement and/or construction of streets, and a vision of how the existing street network should ultimately function. And the functional classification of a street is used by staff to determine required right-of-way width, street pavement width and design, speed limits, methods of financing construction, and access control. It's used almost daily by staff in determining required building setbacks and, and maximum sign sizes and, and required sign setbacks, and a lot of the codes reference the, the requirements in relation to whether that property is on an arterial or a collector and, and things of those nature. The proposed map will be referred to and used by staff, or in staff reports presented to the Planning Commission and the City Commission when they review subdivision plats and make decisions on the rezoning requests. So, staff has a few suggestive findings that could support approval of this. The original adopted major street plan did not clearly show all collector and local streets in the city or, or contain classifications for those, and the proposed functional street classification map would depict the classification of every street in the city and major streets in the outlined urban area boundary. The updated functional street classification map, under consideration, would make the adopted and publicly used map conform more closely to previous street classifications and KDOT's street classifications. The updated map would more clearly depict the expectations and the vision of the Planning Commission and the City Commission for future transportation patterns in the community at the time the plan was adopted and the current major street plan map. And having an internally-produced functional street classification map will make it easier to keep up to date over time. With, and so staff would recommend adoption of the updated functional street classification map for official use based on our suggested findings, and with that, staff, planning staff is available, as well as our city engineer, to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you, Destin. Nice job. Are there any questions of staff?
I've, I've got one. Somewhere I read, I, I can't quite put my finger on it, but it said that KDOT uses these classifications for funding decisions. Can you just give me an example of what that looks like?
Our city engineer might be able to speak a little more to that, or maybe possibly, Dean, unspecifically how that gets used.
I can speak in terms of the, the, KDOT has an urban aid program, and it's not a fixed cycle, but Salina is, has almost historically been on about a three-year cycle where we get a project that's funded by KDOT, and it usually has to be a street that we've classified as an arterial street, but if you look at South Ohio, that was widened and improved from Magnolia to Schilling, that was a KDOT assisted project, and about three years after that, we got KDOT funding to improve Magnolia Road east from Ohio Street, and I think we're about to embark on improvements to West Magnolia Road, west of I-135, but I'll let Mr. Coatch speak to that.
Commissioners, Jim Coatch, city engineer. Typically, federal aid is, is handled or funneled to the city through the Kansas Department of Transportation. Typically, the city has done, participated in the federal fund exchange in that most of our federal money comes to us as state dollars and doesn't necessarily have all the regulatory requirements of federal dollars, and we do get a discount for that, or we get 90% of our normal amount, and KDOT does, does the, exchanges it with state dollars, and then they have plenty of projects to actually use federal dollars on. Now, it is important that KDOT, or not KDOT, but Salina has typically been successful here recently in applying for federal projects, and those federal projects do have some contingencies as far as the, the roads or bridges that they're participating in beyond collectors or major arterials or those kinds of things. It used to be the old federal aid routes, the FAS routes, that they would only fund federal money in cities or counties if they were on the federal aid network, but by using the federal fund exchange, we can use our federal money as state money on any roadway in the city, so it gives us a lot more flexibility. But it is very important, I think, that this, the work that staff has done, the planning staff has done to classify these as collectors, arterials, those kinds of things, is very, very important to us for planning in the future, not only for their day-to-day zoning requests and permit requests and those kinds of things, but Salina was very close to meeting the limits of a metropolitan area during the last census, 50,000 being the limit for that, and I think cleaning up our, our route classifications as well as our urban area boundaries puts us in a great position in, in 2030 if that does occur, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Sure.
Any other questions of staff?
There, there's been some discussion about Schilling Road east of Ohio. Two subdivisions that we have approved have gone in on either side of that, and that road has not been improved. Is there any update to that, or would that have anything to do with this proposal?
Well, there's an inter-local agreement in place that's never been changed or modified, and under that inter-local agreement, if you, most people can't remember a time, but Schilling used to be a gravel and dirt road between Ohio and Ninth Street, and the city agreed with the county that the city would take over responsibility for Ninth Street, from Ninth Street to Ohio, and in exchange, the county agreed to perpetually maintain Ohio Street from, so they own the right-of-way, they own the street from Ohio Street to the levee. And so, if you look at the, the city limit line, we have left it out of the city limits because it's, it's a county-owned and maintained road, and they're the ones who have chosen to leave it in that condition. So, the, the other, the other segments of improving Schilling from Ninth Street to Ohio Street were done cooperatively between the city and the county, but I, I don't know what the county's plan is for that, other than they would like to make it the city's responsibility, but that agreement that makes it their responsibility would have to be modified to change that. Technically, it doesn't, it deadends at the levee, and the Sleen County owns about 95% of the property on the south side of Schilling Road, and the, you just have the portion of the Southview Estates, which doesn't actually have frontage on Schilling Road because the, the county owns the ditch that's on the south side of Schilling Road, and so they own the ditch, they own a, a floodplain area to the east of that, and they own the road.
So, this proposal would have no effect on that, correct?
Well, I, I'd have to look at the map again to see how it's classified, but it, it doesn't change that classification. I don't, I'd have to look at the map again to see how we're showing. I think it's shown as a local segment.
It's shown as a local road, and that wasn't one of the segments.
It did not change, it was shown as a local road because it doesn't really connect to anything. You're, you have to go farther west, Destin. You're on the other side of the river, so it's, you can see Ohio Street, which is an arterial, and Schilling is an arterial, but then going to the west of there, it's, it's shown as a local street because it, it really doesn't carry any traffic except for the, there's a model airplane flying area out there, and there is a Johnson Sand gravel pit, but there's, there's really, there's no physical connection between those subdivisions and Schilling Road because of its present condition.
And actually, just to clarify, that, that section of Schilling is a very light gray that's not actually classified at all in the city functional classification map because it doesn't connect out to anything, and it's a county road, so those gray, those really light gray lines are all county roads that aren't classified.
And so, until, until that inter-local agreement is changed or renegotiated or some new arrangement, the, the city takes care of Schilling between Ohio and Ninth, and the county takes care of Schilling east of Ohio.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion or a motion for this application?
I would move that we approve application M-24-14 filed by the city engineer for the amendment for a major street plan map.
I'd second that.
It's been moved in second to approve application M-24-14. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. All right. We'll move into administrative items.
We're at the end of the year, and at the end of the year, the city commission starts looking at projects for 2025 capital improvements, and as Mr. Hirsch will explain, there's a state statutory process that requires the capital improvement programs be reviewed by the Planning Commission to look for conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, I'm gonna let Mr. Hirsch give you an overview.
Thank you, Dean. So, this, the capital improvement program, which we call the CIP, is basically a listing of important projects by priority, including the cost estimate and their funding source, and the plan covers five years, so it would be the upcoming year and then the four years following that, and every year gets reviewed by the Planning Commission. And the reason it gets reviewed by the, the Planning Commission is because ideally, the city's comprehensive plan and the CIP should be tied together in prioritizing these higher level public prop, projects and investments. And as Mr. Andrew mentioned, state law requires the Planning Commission review all major transportation, utility, and public facility projects for conformance with the comprehensive plan, and that's why we bring it to you before it goes to the city commission. So, in this case, what we're going to do is we're gonna go through the quick overview of the upcoming year and the projects that are slated for work to be done by the, the city, and we're gonna look at those and talk about those. If you have any questions, let us know. So, we categorize them by ongoing projects, as well as phased projects, and then new projects, and then design projects, projects that will be going out for design work, not necessarily taking place physically or, or the projects physically happening, but rather just being designed. So, ongoing projects, the projects that we have every year, waterline improvements, we try to replace about approximately eight miles of waterlines every year so that our water system is up to date, and we don't get, in a situation where it's old and we haven't been taking care of it. So, we replace approximately eight miles annually, and that takes about $2 million. We also are constantly monitoring and resurfacing and making street improvements to our street systems to make sure that they are all functioning well. And then, we also have been annually completing bike trail segments or hike bike trails, the 10-foot bike trails that you see around town. So, those would be ongoing projects, projects that we work on every year. Phased projects would be ones that are, are coming on and may have multiple phases. For that, we have the Parks Capital Improvement Plan, which are, the, the city has a master parks plan, and working on improving and making improvements and investments into our parks on a continual basis as part of the CIP. There's a Magnolia sidewalk from Ninth Street to Ohio that is being planned, there's West Magnolia Phase 1, 2, and, well, Phase 1 would be the first phase of, of construction, and then there's Phase 2 and 3 design, and so there's some phases of the West Magnolia project that are being projected for this following year. And then, new projects, these would be projects that aren't phased or ongoing, and one of those is a city light stage shade structure, so there's a shade structure that's being proposed for the city light stage where there are also different community events that take place, such as the farmer's market and, and other types of special events. Broadway medians plus trees on, on Broadway, there's Fourth Street at-grade railroad crossing improvements, there's raised crosswalks, sidewalks, and parking lot enhancements associated with the YMCA area, there's screening trees along 135, and between 135- There's screening trees along 135, between 135 and some of the residences east of the highway. West Magnolia medium gateway sign improvements. Overlook Estates waterline extension. The commission might remember working with Overlook Estates and the new proposed development over south of River Run and the waterline looping that is necessary and required for that. That's what this particular extension project involves. Dirt for the old landfill. And then, we have a few projects that are entering their design phase that are larger projects. One would be East Crawford Road and bridge widening. A second would be Ninth and Waterwell Signal and Roundabout, being looked at for design work. And then, scales at the landfill, and then airport water main replacement and design work. In total, all of these projects come out to a little less than $19 million, and here's how it's broken down in the table here. And so, if the Planning Commission concurs with the major public facility and public projects that are being identified in the 2025 CIP, and that they are located in an existing service area and are areas identified as primary growth areas, for the city, a motion should be made to approve the attached resolution and endorse the proposed 2025 CIP project list. And then, if you have any comments or thoughts or any particular projects that you think are especially important that you'd like to talk about, we can, we can do that now.
Thank you, Dustin. Any questions for Dustin? I have a question. Do you have a firm schedule for the Magnolia sidewalk, Ninth to Ohio? No?
We wouldn't, Mr. Coatch here, who works closely with engineering and, because he's on their staff, might have at least a framework idea or arrange that they have in mind.
Jim Coatch, city engineer. The Magnolia Trail Project's been going on underway for quite a while. We've actually got a KDOT grant for that. We did hire a consultant to design the culvert extension just south of the mall, but the remainder of the project, the, the actual trail, the plan, the plans around, associated with the Belmont Railroad crossing and stuff, have been done by our in-house staff.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is that going to be phased in any particular order, ease of construction, or?
Well, we're really hopeful that we can get the agreement with the railroad worked out here after the first of the year. It's currently scheduled for an April letting, and we'd like to complete construction next summer, from May to the end of August, sometime while South's out of school, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Because it'll replace it all the way from Ninth Street, basically, or Highland, all the way over to Ohio Street. Be a nice 10-foot path on the south side.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions of staff for any of these projects?
On the Ninth and Waterwell Signal or Roundabout, how is that, is that determined by current traffic or like anticipated traffic going forward, or, because I know that Great Plains is putting a lot of money into there.
Well, I think we're anticipating future traffic, but Mr. Coatch could probably talk about what considerations might go into Roundabout versus signalizing the intersection. We have to have certain warrants met to justify signalizing, but.
Right, right. And this, this is an emerging need. This wasn't on the plan for last year, but with Great Plains or Kubota's investment in the old Phillips plant, as well as new investment in the same area, we've got the Tony's expansion, so there'll be a lot of, a significant amount of truck traffic exiting 135, going west on Waterwell Road, and then north up Centennial. And then, also on the, the west side of I-135, there's a proposed fueling station that's going through the plating and design process. So, we expect that waterwell interchange, the traffic there to significantly increase in the next year or two. So, we're wanting to make sure that we preserve the right-of-way for either a traffic signal or a roundabout. The roundabout usually takes a larger footprint before everybody builds on the corners there, so that's, that's why it's worded the way it is, that roundabouts, particularly in urban areas, handle a lot, a lot more traffic, or there's less queues or backups. Last thing we'd want to do is have a bunch of trucks on Waterwell Road backed up past the ramps, so that, that would be a concern for us. Even though it's slower, traffic keeps moving, and the queues or the backups for a roundabout are a lot less. We've currently got a similar situation at Schilling and Ohio, and that's another corner that's not developed, but the, anybody that's been there at 5:00 knows how long the line is on Schilling Road. So, that's another area where we'd like to get the design work done, preserve the right-of-way, and hopefully be able to build it in a couple of years.
So, the 200,000 is for just the design of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's, if you look down through the pages, it's a two-lane roadway right at Waterwell Road. Just north of there, by Lawn-McArthur, transitions to a four-lane road and the kind of the typical Ninth Street that goes up past the mall. There's another project a few years down where we want to make sure we preserve that right-of-way to make sure we can extend that, that business corridor or Ninth Street, that four-lane, further south down towards Waterwell. But those are emerging needs, just based on, that's a really hot development area right now.
I drive through there every day, and I just concerned about a roundabout working, especially with advanced auto. A lot of times, they have trucks just parked on the side and stuff there, too, but I'm sure you guys will figure it out.
Yeah, this is just doing the preliminary design work and making sure we preserve the right-of-way. The actual traffic counts and projections and stuff will be engineered when we, when we get to that point.
Yeah.
And I was also concerned about the second intersection you mentioned, the Ohio and Schilling, anticipation with those two subdivisions filling in there, north and south of Schilling, in addition to Ever G that has now come in down there. I think that's a significant intersection that needs to be addressed, traffic issue that is there. And I didn't see that anywhere in this paperwork, so I.
Yeah, it's, right now, we've got the design of, of the Ninth Street and Waterwell designed in '25, potentially built in '26. The, the one at Ohio and Schilling is designed in '26 and potentially built in '27, so we, we don't necessarily want to try to do all of that at once, but they're both emerging. But we think that the truck traffic and the commercial traffic on, on Ninth Street's going to be a bigger problem sooner.
I concur, yeah.
All right. Any other questions of staff?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If you look at your Planning Commission work last year and how much emphasis or time you looked at projects along Waterwell Road, you can see that that, with the potential warehouse across from Salina Vortex and Maverick Convenience Store, their, Waterwell's kind of an emerging corridor, so.
All right. It opened up for discussion or a motion?
I just did want to note that as part of the review, the last year's review was, on the CIP, was construction of a new fire station, number four, and I just wanted to report that the City Commission approved bids for the, to begin construction of the new fire station. So, that was, that is off the list now, but the, the funding for that was approved, the project was approved, and now you should start seeing things happen over there.
And we need a motion to send this.
Yes. A motion should be made to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the CIP as presented and sent it to the City Commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second to endorse this 2025 capital improvement program project list. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Dean, do we have any unfinished or other business?
Don't have any other unfinished business unless there's something that Commissioner wanted to bring forward. Staff doesn't have any items that carry over or to bring forward. I did want to note that we do have items filed, and we will have a meeting on 17th of December. And there's an application, it's not really changing the use, but there's an application to change the zoning of what used to be a Maori Clinic or Hodges and Marshall Clinic Building at 655 South Santa Fe. It's kind of a large building that's on the east side of the street, in the middle of the block, it's been vacant for some time. And then, if you're familiar with the subdivision called Nine South, which is, I refer to as the Pumpkin Patch, but is now, no longer the Pumpkin Patch. That was approved as, as a four-lot commercial plat, and now that they've got some prospects, they want to reconfigure the plating out there, so those are the two items that will be on the 17th.
Good. Thank you. Do we have anybody online, Dustin, that would like to speak?
We do not have anyone online from the public. We do have our student representative, if you'd like to share anything.
Austin, do you have anything?
I'm okay, thank you. I mean, my only concern would just be with, I mean, it was already approved, the Magnolia pathway. I just have a question. Is there going to be any like, sort of like pedestrian protections on those like roadway intersections? Like, for example, I think it's Belmont and Magnolia, like a, per se, like a leading pedestrian interval with that stoplight or anything?
Do you have a lot of pedestrians in that area?
Yeah, no, the, the, right now, the, the main crosswalks pretty much cross parallel to Magnolia. There is, we are trying to, to move the pedestrians further from the street and also isolate the amount of, and to get the, the pedestrian crossings minimalized the, the amount of trail that's actually on railroad property. So, those rail crossings are actually going to be moved north and south of the intersection just a little bit. But there'll be new concrete crossings and sidewalks that will connect on the north and south sides of Magnolia to cross Belmont.
Is this posted online anywhere? The design, the preliminary design?
No, it's not online yet. We, we just submitted the plans for review and approval to KDOT this week, and we do hope to have it, final plans to them by the first part of February. We'll try to post something then, but that's, that's what we need to do to have it potentially in an April letting, so we can build it next summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd, I'd like to thank Austin for being our younger voice in this group and being part of our planning team. I appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you, Austin. All right, I move for an adjournment.
So, move.
In second?
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.